Hello, the pilot is going to head by now, consent or not, is any part sound?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see everyone, I'm just gonna ask everyone to find a place where they're comfortable, we're gonna begin our meeting. We just have a few minutes, we'll be taking over some things, and we're glad to see everyone here. And again, like always, once in a while, we'll have the opportunity to provide this city and its residents with a proclamation. I'm gonna ask the city council to join me in this very special proclamation. You know, we talked about the, you know, first responders, just like the first responders that we had here in Long Beach, that during a time of crisis, these adults can run towards the problem. And I have to say that after witnessing the storm and hearing the standing, I learned to respect everyone who first responded. This gentleman was a very, very respectful guy, because he showed a kind of perception that really needed to be understood. And we need to be safe. This person is Mr. Rudy Penelope. He's here, Rudy, would you come forward please? Rudy? Rudy saw it, and it was his judgment. And I only read about this in the newspaper, and I didn't realize this was one of our guys. Now, I'm gonna read part of it, so you can see what was said here. It says, "Whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to recognize those who are committed to the betterment of the city and the lives of the residents, and whereas the city of Long Beach does desire to publicly acknowledge this police officer, Rudy Penelope, in recognition of his action on Sunday, August 20, 2017, where through his prompt arrival on the scene and quick thinking, recognized the vehicle which had been used in a robbery. Robbery is a crime, as we teach you back there. And he quickly made it to the right. Let's focus, Rudy. Now, therefore, the city of Long Beach, city manager, yes, the city council, in recognition of his exemplary service, hereby proudly present this proclamation to Mr. Rudy Penelope. Rudy, keep up the great work here.
If you'd like to elaborate a little on this incident, this was not just a plain robbery, this was a bank robbery. And the individual that was apprehended in the bank robbery confessed to have checked the robbery in Iced County, and he was on the spree. So Rudy, not only accepted this without anyone getting hurt, but also Penelope is exemplary of all of our offices. Thank you very much.
I think, to me, it's been an honor, and continues to be an honor, to be able to recognize these wonderful people that we have in Long Beach that really stand up and, really stand up and face the music sometimes for our safety. Another person that I wanted to recognize here, and of course, I wasn't able to make this, but was for our former Assemblyman, Mr. Harvey Wiesenberg. Mr. Harvey Wiesenberg actually did 60 years of work as a lifeguard. I think that that is absolutely magnificent. Yes, let's thank for Harvey, that's who came here. But I also want to recognize who bought our lifeguards for the work this summer. I attended the one time, I had time to come to the beach with my family, I saw the lifeguards actually come out and save folks three consecutive times. I was amazed at how they're looking after folks and seeing when people are in danger, and how they quickly react to pull folks out of the water. And thank God, we did not have any real serious incidents this summer, thanks to the hard work of the less than, you know, lifeguards. This has been a magnificent summer, in spite of the hard work that the Army Corps of Engineers is doing, and of course, they did impact our beach season, but, you know, the spirit of everyone for Long Beach and Long Beach's beach still really came up in the forefront. I just wanna remind folks of a couple of things. First and foremost, I'd like everyone to know that at the end of the meeting, we will have the Freedom Welfare, and you need to sign up for that now, before the end of the city council meeting, so that you can have your chance to let us know your concerns, your fears, and sometimes you're crazy for what's going on. The other thing too, is that I need to remind everyone that we have a three-minute limit on those comments. And also, very, very important, is that we need to respect every one of us, or the one that comes up to the microphone, regardless of what they have to say, because it is their right to say it, and they don't need to hear heckles, or booing, or so on, because that's not what we do in Long Beach, and I will make sure that that doesn't happen here. And finally, the last thing that I want to remind everybody about, is for every one of us to look into ourselves and to look at the kind of decorum we want at a government function like this. So with that, folks, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Frisher.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to our annual meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, on Tuesday, September 5, 2017, September 2. We have a roll call, Councilman Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Maydell.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Alano.
Yes.
President Torres, here. And to further indicate the presence of City Mayor Jackson, the corporation council, while the others speak, now, soon to reply.
Mr. Penelope, would you lead us into the next question?
If you apply on the United States of America, and if you're a representative of what you stand on a nation, on a God, and in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I thank everyone for being here tonight. It's always an important meeting for us to have residents come to Long Beach and to air their feelings. And as I was saying those three minutes, it's your time to let us know what's on your mind. And just one last reminder, we may not be able to answer every question you have, for whatever reason, it could be a legal reason, or it could be because we just don't have an answer. So we ask that you sign up, and this is exactly what the city has been doing throughout the meeting, because we need to hear from everyone. With that, I'm gonna ask our city manager to give us our update. Mr. Schin?
Okay, first night, I wanted to mention that after Sandy, the city received just an outpouring of support and donations from around the country. Since then, anytime disaster strikes, our natural response as a community has always been to pay forward. On behalf of the city council, we want to again sincerely thank the hundreds, if not thousands, of folks who donated and volunteered in the community relief effort for Harvey victims in Texas. What started out as just an idea two weekends ago took on a life of its own, and it's truly magical. Long Beach did what Long Beach does, we pulled together and demonstrated yet again how incredibly connected we all are, and how extraordinary our community is. Special thank you to the volunteers from the Auxiliary Police and the Fire Department, and of course, Father Brian, Tim, and Christina Kramer for making a remarkable effort at St. Mary's. It was truly spectacular. And also pretty nice to see our police commissioner doing some nebulous things as well. With that said, and in all of our, in our consciousness, as we watch the forecast going on and looking towards Florida right now, with Irma, let us remember that September is National Prepare-This Month. And we are in the midst of a hurricane season that forecasters have predicted, and unfortunately, it's coming true so far, to be potentially more active than normal, we have to do everything we can to be prepared. So during Prepare-This Month, we'll be posting helpful tips on the city's social media with the hashtag #LVReady. We'll also be talking about all of the measures that have been taken since Sandy to better prepare Long Beach residents for whatever may come our way, and we'll be co-hosting a number of Prepare-This related events. On Thursday, September 14, we're co-hosting a Prepare-This workshop with the Red Cross. Flyers are available in the front of the room. On Monday, September 18, today, we'll be co-hosting a meeting with the Army Corps in City Hall, this festive back base study that they've been working on. And the Army Corps will provide us with information and guidance on potential resiliency measures that could protect us from flooding along Reynolds Channel, but not just protect Long Beach, but off the entire South Shore. Also, on September 26, the governor's office will be partnering with us to host another Prepare-This meeting. We encourage all Long Beach residents to sign up for emergency notifications, email, text, phone alerts on longbeachny.gov. Download the Long Beach Response mobile app and visit prepare.ny.gov for information on Prepare-This. It's been another phenomenal beach season in Long Beach, offering up a variety of food options and family-friendly activities. In addition to summer staples, including our free concert series, arts and crafts festivals, and film festivals, we've played those to Long Island Pride, we've got successful partnership with Social Bicycles, and the city joined up with NYU Winter Hospital to provide sunscreen dispensers along the beach and add our parks for folks to use free of charge. The Long Beach Lifeguards have had another fantastic summer, as the city council president just mentioned, keeping Long Beach residents and visitors safe for the beach. This summer, 97, over 97,304, to be exact, preventative actions were taken, with 186 swimmer assists and six water rescues. City Long Beach Lifeguard Bank, Long Beach Lifeguard Control, and Chief Paul Gillespie for the dedication and hard work. Now that the summer season is coming to a close, sadly, the schools are opening up. We'd like to remind everyone to share the road, look for students during school hours, obey the posted speed limits, and of course, do not text and drive. As you may recall, cities taking several efforts to improve traffic safety, including lowering speed limits for residential school areas, rehabilitating roads and road markings in and around schools within city limits, advocating for the county of Lido Boulevard's speed limits to be reduced, acquiring the Safelifts School Grant funding to enhance enforcement and education, and stationing traffic officers in school classrooms before and after school. And finally, to remind us of upcoming events, this Saturday is the Michelle and Neo volleyball tournament. Sunday is the King and Queen of the Beach Surf Contest, weather permitting. And on Monday morning, we'll be hosting, holding our annual 9/11 remembrance ceremony at New Recreation Center. Of course, Long Beach Jazz Festival is back next week, running from September 14 through 17. For more information on upcoming events, visit longbeachny.gov.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our meeting, and again, thank you, Mr. Schin.
Okay, the first item is public hearing for Resolution Grand Wave motion blocking requirements of 68 West Port Andrews, second floor, for a hobbyist use construction facility.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna open the hearing. And if we have the proprietor, or the person that applied for the permit here, you could just state your name for the record, we appreciate that.
Allison Rudy.
Okay. During this time, we had to standardize questions that we asked any businesses coming into our city. The very first one is your hours of operation, when are the hours of operation?
3:00 p.m. at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, and how many employees do you plan to have?
Right now, we have three.
Three, okay. Do you expect any off-street parking deliveries?
No.
Okay, very good. And maybe just for the sake of the audience and our residents, can you give us a description of the nature of this business?
We'll be offering guitar lessons. We have a few different options, we have a beginner's class for adults, and we have private lessons for all ages, all levels, all styles. And we're also starting an exciting new project called Guitar Yoga, which is something that's...
Sounds great, sounds great. And the very last question is a question, of course, that we need to look into yourselves, to see whether or not you do want this. We're offering the bicycle racks to be put in front of your businesses, that, you know, of course, is something expensive to you. If you are interested in that, we have them for you, that we can have put in. Okay, so you can let us know.
Okay.
And the other thing is that we ask that you stay with us a little while, because you might just be able to hear the results of this hearing.
Okay.
Thank you again.
One more question.
Did I carry you guys a little while back?
You should have.
Okay, very good. Thanks for coming up. Okay, yes, that's right. Any comments with the council? How about comments from the public, anybody in the audience? Of course, this music school coming to Long Beach that we love, I think all of us in Long Beach are amazing. Okay, we haven't voted yet, but again, please stay with us, and again, we'll close the hearing now.
Okay, our second public hearing is for Resolution President Ray, for motion blocking requirements for premise 872 by Sweet Street, for clothing and shoe boutique.
Okay. And with that, I'm gonna open that here, is the person, or persons that have applied for this permit present in our meeting? Okay? I don't see the applicant here.
We'll call it again.
Okay, we'll call it again, as we knew.
Our next public hearing is a warning to make code warnings of the city of Long Beach for non vehicles in traffic.
Okay, this amendment will clarify the location of the new stop sign.
Very good. And my last question, where is the stop sign located?
Shore Road in Long Beach.
Are there any questions here from the council on the installation of the new stop sign? Any questions from the public on the installation of this new stop sign on Shore Road in Long Beach? Okay, we'll move on.
Our next item is a public hearing for warning to make code warnings of the city of Long Beach regarding vehicles for hire.
Okay, this amendment, the city's vehicular and traffic laws to include transportation network companies and their drivers, makes them subject to the same rules that govern taxis when it comes to the obstruction of traffic. Specifically, I think what this is aimed at is the phenomenon where the police make sure that taxis don't cover, so to speak, and that's particularly in the West End, and this is to make sure that the transportation network companies have to follow these same rules.
Harvey, go for it.
So just to be fair to the ride share we're talking about.
Ride share, yeah.
Where's your lift?
Yeah.
Off the same rule.
Same rule. Very good, very good.
It's my understanding that the police have requested, as well, a report?
Yes, this is that the request for the police to keep traffic.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Just to clarify, this is something, it's the same type of requirement for taxi check, no different?
Correct.
Very good. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, how about comments from the public on this new code of conduct and regulation that we have? Please move forward. Oh, one check. Good to see you. And you're welcome. We just need your name for the record.
Sure, Allison, thank you. So is there going to be any kind of increased enforcement of the ride share in addition to taxis? And I just need to add, for anyone in the audience who's not aware of this, city council does maintain, do you guys have a control of the medallions, we have 50 medallions, correct? It's 50, okay. Is there any kind of step-up enforcement, or you just, this is just a visible code change, or addition?
The whole point of the code change is to enable enforcement, so you have to anticipate and increase enforcement.
Correct.
You aren't able to enforce this for...
Not against the transportation network company drivers, like Uber and Lyft and whatnot. This is to subject and to same laws that taxi drivers...
And settle parking.
No, I'm not talking about that, this is for traffic purposes.
Good job, great. So, and you mentioned that this is more so for the West End, because we are having, we have had taxi issues outside of the Long Island Railroad, where they are blocking J.J. Evans?
Yes.
It is...
That's right.
It's my understanding that it includes, I guess, throughout the city, but in particular, issue in West End, but it's my understanding that it would enforce it, would continue throughout the city, in particular, there has been an issue.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that this isn't checking the box and just adding this into a code, and that this is gonna be something that we're gonna be a little more active on, because that intersection where the taxis, the taxi stands are, by J.J. Evans, where Edwards is, that's not just uncomfortable to cross, it's a public health problem, when we are getting hit at unusually high rates trying to cross, not just Long Beach residents, but our beloved tourists. So I just wanna make sure that, and I'm questioning, is there going to be a step-up in enforcement of this across the board, or is this just kind of so you can, I don't know, check a box in a piece of TLC lobby or something?
The police ask for it.
They ask to be able to do that.
The police ask for it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just curious, policy-related, are there still 484 taxi medallions leading around of that little square space next to the Long Island?
It's really, you know, it's much, it's really happening.
It kind of is, I just, you know, we're talking about enforcement and wanting to regulate our taxis for hire, whether it's our Long Beach taxi, whether it's Beachtree Taxi, whether it's Lyft, Uber. I just wanna make sure that you guys have an actual control, that you know what's going on.
Okay, we appreciate your question.
Okay, and I will be following you.
Great, and thank you, thank you for coming up. And are there any other comments from the public on this item? Okay, very good, we're gonna move on to our next item.
Okay, our final public hearing orders authorizing financing for the acquisition of two ambulance chassis, and planning new beach comfort stations and a lifeguard headquarters facility. Stating the estimated total cost of such proposals is $385,000, cooperating said now therefore in authorizing issues of not to exceed $385,000 bonds, of said city to find that said cooperation.
Okay, this resolution authorizes $385,000 in funding for two projects that will support public safety and rebuilding efforts from the superstorm Sandy. First project will enable the city to re-chassis two city ambulances for a total estimated cost of $185,000. This will extend the usable life of each ambulance by approximately five to eight years, and save the city approximately $205,000 in replacement costs. The second project, which is fully reversible from FEMA in the state, totals $200,000. This project will enable the city to continuous rebuilding efforts related to the construction of three additional comfort stations and one lifeguard headquarters, which were destroyed during the storm. Kind of note, the city continues to acquire better interest rates as a result of our improved freight rate.
And I have a question regarding the chassis. Does this include the engine and transmissions of the vehicles? When we say chassis, is there someone that answered that? I know the fire commissioner is here, I'm sure he can speak to you. Okay. Welcome, Commissioner, it's good to see you. The only reason why I ask is because of the way it's written. Chassis can be as the hardware and...
It's the, we're taking the ambulance box off an old chassis, and taking that box and putting on a brand-new chassis, which includes the cab, the wheels, axles, everything that box rides on.
Including the engine and transmission?
Including the engine.
Wow, wow, that's pretty good.
So the boxes are, have lifetime guarantees on it, unfortunately, the chassis do not. We have two of our chassis that do have some cracks, and are concerned about them, as well as some engine issues. We can get two additional ambulances that will be, for the most part, brand-new, for less than the cost of one new ambulance, doing it this way.
And Commissioner Cummins, and the other concern is that, how old is that going to take? Is that going to put any of our ambulances on commission during that period of time?
Our two primary ambulances will remain in service, and we will keep one backup ambulance in service. We haven't worked out the logistics yet, as far as whether we're gonna send them both out at the same time you do them, or just one and then there's the other. Once this is approved, we'll sit down with hopefully the ambulance manufacturers. We're hoping that Sherman policy allows them to be able to do the re-chassis and continue the lifetime warranties on the ambulance boxes themselves. But once this is approved, hopefully, we'll be able to go into the planning stages of the commission as possible.
Great, great. Are there any comments on the council on chassis and these repairs and the buildings? It also includes the three comfort stations, which is great stuff. Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
I have a question for our controller.
Welcome, controller James, good to see you there, good to see you.
Good evening. I just wanted to ask about the, we have bonding $185,000, and no one wants to take on any more debt, whether it's the home or, you know, here in the city. But how are we doing in terms of our debt, that's what we're counting, and what's the, you know, percentage of our budget that's going on?
Our debt capacity?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're doing pretty well. We're at 24, about 24% debt capacity. We are looking to couple this borrowing with the capital and the borrowing that we authorize back with the budget. So we are paying down at a rapid rate, and putting on debt at, in that such rapid rate as possible.
And what's the recommended maximum percentage of debt?
Well, we can go all the way up to, I believe, about 90 million, but we're, I mean, about 70% of our total debt. I can make the number so. Over total value, we should go for five years.
We're only at 24%.
We're only at 24%.
Of that?
Of that, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Just once again, just a clarification, just some, so the $200,000 will be, at some point, FEMA will come back and repay out of the $200,000, just the 185, the 185...
For 185?
Yep, over, it's a five-year useful life. The other amount is fully reversible, once we get the FEMA money in. Thank you.
Very good, very good. And I guess my last question's gonna be to our public relations, public works commissioner, and the question is on the comfort stations. Do we have an idea of where these comfort stations are gonna be located? Maybe we don't, we haven't planned that yet. Let's welcome Commissioner Aranda, good to see you.
Thank you. One will be located at Neptune Boulevard. The reason for moving ahead with the engineering design on these stations is we have the second part of the Army Corps project under, developed by the D E C and the Army Corps, and we're trying to get these stations designed so that the Army Corps can put in the footings and the piles and place that here, so that we don't have to go through a whole bidding process again, which would delay the installation, which is going to take about a couple of years. So one will be at Neptune Boulevard, one will be at New York Avenue. These are gonna be off the new crossovers being put in by the Army Corps engineers, which are gonna be 30-foot by 90-foot long crossovers, which will almost be like extensions of the boardwalk, so they're gonna be pretty nice. And the other area is down in West End, and we're looking at, we're having engineers study several options on the West End bathrooms, as we only have one bathroom that exists on the West End. Looking at high-end temporary bathrooms that can be removed at the end of the season, or removed in the event of a storm, because if we don't do that, we're gonna have to build them at the basement elevation, which will put them up above the dune and, you know, affect the views of people living on West End. So those are the bathrooms. And the lifeguard station will be built between Edmonds and Riverside, and that's also a replacement. Wall will be refunded. Wall will be refunded to the tune of about one point seven million dollars, so.
Very good, very good. Sure, sure.
And Commissioner, these projects are being done in conjunction with the Army Corps management?
The, well, the bathrooms will be done by us after the new project and the Sandy finishment is done. The portion they will be doing is the pile driving and the foundations for the bathrooms. That's why we need to have them designed completely so they can put in their specs and they'll do the permitting process with the city. Otherwise, we have to wait till they're completely done with their project and we have to go through a permitting process, which could be quite mighty.
And if I, hey, this would be to replace the temporary lifeguard structures and create a more permanent structure similar to before the storm, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
The new crossovers eventually, they're going to be built out of the Sandy Baywood that we currently have on board? No, they're not. They will be built out of grade one yellow line, which is similar to our old boardwalk. The Army Corps is putting the build for all crossovers. As I said, there's fourteen crossovers from the boardwalk. Four of them will be built at thirty feet wide by ninety feet long to get over the dune. And they're going to become quite nice extensions to the boardwalk. And one will be at New York, one will be at Neptune, one at Laurelton. And I was going to ask, but it's going to be by Edwards.
And all, so you have to check, they'll all be yellow line?
They'll all be yellow line, yes. The Army Corps will not go for the U-Bahn.
Yeah, yeah, it does cost more. Certainly, my last question, I don't know if there are any other more, you know, other questions, is that in these comfort stations, are they similar to the kinds of comfort stations we have with concessions? Or these are bathrooms?
These will be strictly bathrooms. We have a limit of fourteen hundred square feet that I sent you. This was the deputy manager, I'm going to give him credit. FEMA was not up to refunding the remaining amount of bathrooms we needed. Joe was able to convince them that they really should be replacing our bathrooms by the amount of square footage we had before, not by the cost of replacing the comfort stations. So he was able to convince them after quite a lengthy discussion. So he deserves a nice pat on the back, because this was big.
Absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner, thank you for being here. Are there any comments from the public on these projects that are coming down the pike? Including our new ambulances?
President Torres, I just wanted to ask one other question to the commissioners. Can you just speak to the A B A compliance with respect to the new bathrooms?
Yes, all, all three bathrooms will be A B A compliant. Including the high-end temporary bathrooms.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner.
Very good question. Thank you again Commissioner. And I think if we don't have any more questions from the public, would you like to add something? Sure, Ms. James.
I just wanted to follow up on your question. So we are currently at the seven, the seven percent is about three hundred and forty-five million. Our current debt amount is about eighty-two point six. Okay, excluding our short-term debt. I think that we borrow from FEMA to build water, which is excluded from our deficit.
Very good, thank you, thank you. There's a question, would I please come forward? Just to give your name for the record and welcome to our city council meeting here. It's good to always have comments from folks here.
You never seem to remember me, Jordan Barnes, West Olive Street.
I remember the name now, it's just that, you know, of course...
Well, we're all going to miss you, Councilman. Couple of questions regarding the project. When are the new projects scheduled to be completed? And some of the gentlemen just said, there's only going to be four crossovers from the boardwalk, not as many as we have. Oh, the white ones, so it's still going to be as many as, like, almost every entrance. And when do we anticipate this project's going to be completed?
This is an excellent question. Ms. Brandon, Commissioner, do you? Excellent questions.
The Army Corps design is at ninety percent right now, so they have not released one. They're going to put this out now. So there's, they're going to be having a meeting on this once they have the final plans, a public meeting. But they have no thought yet or no definite date as to when they're going to put it out to bid. And then when they do put it out to bid, they have no definite date from the contractor as to when they will start. This is type project, once they start, they have to work continuously, there's going to be interruptions. So they, you know, until they actually put the contract out to bid and actually get the, from the contractor, their rules to bid, when they're going to stop, we really won't have a schedule. But it will probably be an eight-to-nine month project, and we know that much.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you.
And one other comment. I assume that as soon as this project's up and done, our city manager will immediately go after the payment of over flood insurance rates by forty percent. Right, Mr. Sherman?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, right? We continually lobby as we do these projects to improve the residency of the city. We continually lobby to improve what's called our C R S rating, which is what subsidizes all of our homeowners' flood insurance. So we successfully got that up from a ten percent subsidy to fifteen percent. Though right now, that whole thing is threatened as the National Flood Insurance Program is up for renewal by Congress and the President. So we are hopeful that that will be renewed. Otherwise, not only do we lose our C R S rating, but we lose our entire flood insurance subsidy, which would be, as I'm sure we can all agree, disastrous to all of us who live by the oceans.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for asking us an excellent question. Are there any other comments on this item, folks? Very important part of, you know, what we hope to do. And again, you know, of course, the issue of the flood insurance base is critical here in the city of Long Beach. We're going to move on to our next item.
Hey, on to the regular calendar. Item one's resolution granting the walk-in requirements of Route sixty-eight, West Park Avenue, second floor, for hobbyist music construction community. Hearing's been held on this item already. Item two will be recalled at the end of the meeting. Item three is orders to mend code of warning system in the city of Long Beach regarding all vehicles in traffic. Hearing's been held on this item already. Item four is the orders to mend code of warning system in the city of Long Beach regarding vehicles higher. Hearing's been held on this item already. Item five is orders authorizing financing for the acquisition of two ambulance chassis and planning new beach comfort stations and electric headquarters facilities stating estimated total cost of such purposes is three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Incorporated said now therefore authorizing the issues of not to exceed three hundred eighty-five thousand dollar bonds. Of said city to find its set corporation. Hearing's been held on this item already. Item six is the resolution authorizing the city manager to adjourn agreement for the installation of an emergency generator at the Maple Firehouse at the Wells Response State Center.
Okay, continuing...
Continuing with the theme of preparedness month. This emergency generator will allow the firehouse to continue operation during electrical outages, which as we all know is critical. The project includes the building of a protected elevated structure above the base flood elevation to house the new generator, as well as the removal of a non-functioning generator and the associated electrical wiring controls. Funding is being provided through public assistance grant monies from FEMA. And a quick shout-out to the guys at Maple Firehouse, we'd see you later.
Just, welcome everyone, gentlemen, welcome and ladies, welcome.
Commissioner Cummins, can I ask a question? Sorry. I didn't want to interrupt that. Did you say that? I just wanted to ask about the other firehouses. Are all the houses now prepared with emergency generators?
The West End Firehouse is equipped with an emergency generator headquartered here, works off the City Hall generator. The Maple Firehouse, the only one that had a, believe it or not, old generator we took off our nineteen seventy-four rescue truck, which was being used down there to power the firehouse. Now with this new generator, and it didn't power a lot, opened the bay doors and it's one light worked. But now it's all, entire firehouse, we got another disaster and the firefighters are in the firehouse for lots of without, you know, light and everything will function properly.
And is it diesel or is it natural gas or what?
I believe it's going to be natural gas.
Natural gas.
Very good, very good. Any other comments, questions from the council? How about any comments, questions from the public? Okay, we're going to move on to our next item.
Item seven is resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current agreement with coastal planning and engineering and assisting the city in all coordinated efforts with US Army Corps engineers.
Okay, this resolution authorizes us to keep coastal planning on board as technical consultants throughout the project. They've been working successfully with the city since two thousand and eight. Funding is being provided through public assistance grant monies from FEMA.
Okay, any comments from the council? Comments from the, from the public? The design monies we're receiving for this particular purpose of FEMA. Okay, we'll move on to our next item.
Item made this resolution to authorize the city manager to adjourn contract for asphalt overlay work in various locations throughout the city on an hourly basis to the well responsible there.
Okay, the city continually looks for ways to improve its infrastructure and resident quality of life. This resolution will allow for the resurfacing of various roadways throughout the city that do not require sewer and water improvement. Funding is available in the capital improvement.
Any comments from the council on item number eight?
Commissioner, would you be so kind to just speak to some of the various locations?
This is a requirements contract, so we have really no locations picked out at this point. What we'll do now is the deputy commissioner and myself and our construction inspector will go review roads. We've had a lot of complaints come in, issues, things of that nature. Where there's been some destruction by gas companies or electric company, you know, we'll rig all those roads. And then, as we do, and this is on has-been basis sometimes. As an example, we have a black sewer main, we replaced the sewer main, and then they would come in and do that. So this can cover numerous large and small projects.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Any other comments that maybe should hang in your, any comments from the public on this item number eight? Okay, and we'll move on to our next.
Item nine is resolution establishing base proportions in accordance with provisions of article nineteen of real property tax law.
This is an annual resolution which provides the Tax Assessor's Office with the formula necessary to calculate property tax rates pursuant to the real property tax law, which is levied upon homestead, which is residential and non-homestead commercial properties as directed by the state of New York. This legislation was passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor.
Any comments from the, okay, maybe we need a little clarification on this. Perhaps maybe we can get our assessor, our new assessor, welcome. And it's good to see you. And just so everybody can, this is our new assessor. And just say your name so everybody can hear.
I'm the new tax assessor.
Okay, keep an eye here, keep an eye.
Base portion limit, the shift in taxes, every year, we have to get one percent approved. The state wants it five percent. Since we did the reassessment in ninety-one, we'll limit it to one percent. Otherwise, we see dramatic shift in taxes.
I guess it's something that each unit is probably, you pass to pass, right?
Each special business. Massacre County, those are the villages in Massacre County.
And the city were required to as well?
We don't have huge shifts in taxes.
We don't want that. Any other comments from the council? Folks, it's a good opportunity, is any comments from the public to our tax assessor? Okay, thank you, thank you. Good to see you.
Item ten is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a tractor from the so responsible better.
Okay, this tractor shall be used by the city's beach maintenance department for the care and maintenance of the Ocean Beach Park. Funding is available in the capital improvement plan.
Very good. Any questions on this purchasing, or at least this, for this ultimate for this equipment? Any questions from the council? How about the comments, anyone? Okay, what about the public? Important piece of equipment that we have to have for our beach maintenance, folks. Any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to our next item.
Item eleven is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of the ordinance of many code of warnings in the city of Long Beach regarding all vehicles in traffic. Designated for publication only, hearing will be held September nineteenth at seven P M. Item twelve is resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing of application labor and parking requirements for purpose two fifty-one, West Park Avenue for a tattoo shop. Designed for publication only, hearing will be held September nineteenth at seven P M. Item fourteen has been added by unanimous consent. Item thirteen is a resolution to allow the city manager to execute and recreate establishment respective salary increases for the commanding officers association members.
Can we get a little background on this?
Yeah, in a desire to promote the use of energy efficient vehicles, what we're doing is we're, we're, sorry.
Yes, yes, here.
Sorry, so the COA, all right, we're agreeing to consent?
Yes.
All right, so I'll do my best to explain a very complicated situation without unduly oversimplifying it. Back in two thousand and thirteen, our police lieutenants broke off from their, from the E B A, which was their bar minimum previously. And at the time, the effect of that was such that...
Yeah, close, close to the mire.
Okay, so the effect of that was such that the police lieutenant's salary was effectively frozen in time as of that moment, because they were no longer tethered to the E B A contract. Now, what's happened since is the sergeants, which are the next rank below and underneath lieutenants, their salaries have continued to rise through the years. But the supervisor's lieutenant or a management's salaries have remained stagnant during that period. And the result has been such that sergeants have now overtaken the lieutenants in terms of compensation. So even though we are still in the process of negotiating with the commanding officers association and who knows, perhaps, receiving interest arbitration. And in the meantime, we've managed to arrive at this one resolution that we can arrive at, which is to restore the previous increment between the lieutenant rate of pay and the sergeant rate of pay. It's a differential that we're trying to restore. And I believe this is true and important, I think, for cities with that, obviously benefits for coworkers themselves, but also from a managerial operational perspective. We need to do this in order to be able to promote sergeants to the ranks. We can't continue to be in a situation where we ask someone to take their promotion from sergeant to lieutenant and then receive actually the reducting compensation. So I believe this item serves the interests of both the COA members and the city.
Okay, that's very clear and very precise. So any comments from the council?
I'm glad you gave us this.
Yeah, this requiring all of us to sign for it to be placed on the docket, so that's, this is an important item. You know, it's an item that wasn't published until, you know, of course, we all signed to have it discussed. Are there any comments from the public?
I think it's a good opportunity for us to, to restore the differential. And it's great for the members as well to understand and be able to plan, go forward financially.
Good point.
They have to understand where they are.
That's right. I think it's a very important piece for morale also for our police officers.
And these prospective increases, by the way, as you might have mentioned it before, this perspective from this point forward.
Oh, I see. And exactly what is that, for the public?
It just means that the differential will take back after this agreement is executed.
I see, I see, I see. I see, it's like a project.
It's going forward.
Going forward, no, not anymore. Okay, any, any comments, folks, at all, on this important piece of pleasure? Please come forward. We're always glad to hear from folks on these important issues. This is a very important one for our police department. Welcome again.
Regarding this abundant tank, these guys are highly decorated, experienced police lieutenants who haven't had a raise in over a run of years. It's about time.
Yes. Thank you, I'm very, very well put, and thank you. Okay, there are no more comments on the side, and we're going to move on. Thank you again, everyone.
Recall item number two in the hearing, which is a resolution granting the Maple Volute parking requirements of Route seventy-two to West Peach Street for clothing and shoe fatigue.
Okay, again, I'm going to open up the hearing for that. And we're hoping that the applicant for that permit is here. And I don't think that person or persons are here. Okay, so we're going to have to hold that?
Table item two in the hearing?
Yes.
That's where we land out?
Yes.
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 On to looking portion. Item one is resolution granting the number of Russian parking requirements of Route sixty-eight, West Park Avenue for hobbyist music construction. Just look at the option this side.
How much is that?
How much?
All right, you're done.
Yes.
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 Yes, I'm welcome. And we do listen to music. Welcome, yes. Welcome, yes.
Item three is a warning, mandatory code of warnings of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
I will.
Boy, I'm ready.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes, and I'd just like to thank Mr. Marty Miles, I don't think he's here tonight. He's the one that brought this corner to our attention, and we sent the police out there and found that we do affect the stop sign there. So for everyone involved, thank you, my vote is yes.
President's floor.
And absolutely, we believe in safety and we need for the public to come forward and let us know maybe something that we don't see, we need to be brought to our attention. Again, my vote is yes.
Item four is a warning, mandatory code of warnings of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
Item five is a warning to authorize financing for the acquisition of two annual chassis applying in New Beach Comfort stations and a lifeguard headquarters facility, stating the estimated total cost of such purposes is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, appropriate incentive amount therefore, and authorizations not to exceed three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar bonds, a subsidy to finance said appropriate.
Just move the option aside.
I'll take this back.
All right, I'm ready.
I just wanna, I'm still really glad we're taking this step to replace the chassis. I know in my discussions with one of the park chiefs, I know this is something that they were really interested in ensuring that we had and we can upgrade, well, save so much money for the city at the same time. I think it's a great idea. In addition, in many discussions I've had with our lifeguard chief, I'm sure that this new lifeguard headquarters, while it will take some time, after the design phase and engineering study to get actually constructive, but I think this is a really important step, so I vote yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and renew building installation of a large generator that enables fire out to the lowest possible bidder.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
Before you go, I'm ready.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current agreement with coastal planning and engineering and assist in the city in our coordinated efforts with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
Before you go, I'm ready.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract for asphalt overlay work in various locations throughout the city on an absentee basis for the lowest possible bidder.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
Second.
I'll second that.
Before you go, I'm ready.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
Item nine is a resolution establishing base proportions in accordance with provisions of article nineteen of the real property tax law.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
Before you go, I'm ready.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
Item ten is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a tractor from the sole responsible bidder.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
After the question.
Yes.
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 Item eleven is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of warnings or mandatory warnings of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
Second.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
Item twelve is a resolution authorizing publication to notice public hearing of an application weight which we call requirement to permit two fifty-one less parking room for a tattoo shop.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
I'll second that.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
President's floor.
Yes.
Item thirteen is a resolution to allow the city manager to execute and renew establishment respective salary increases for commanding officers association members.
Just move the option aside.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Before you go, I'm ready.
Yes.
After the question.
I think this is overdue, and it's a great first step in moving forward to a resolution that's more very valued to the employees. I'll vote yes.
Just once again, just wanna say that fair wages as well as fair treatment should always be a priority for our city, but that I don't get.
After the question.
Yes, I agree, this is a good first step, President Taj.
I agree.
President's floor.
Again, I feel bad that it's taking this long, but we're happy, very happy, that this came up. My vote is absolutely yes.
City manager, more personal, before it, as we filed out the city court, we'll make a motion closing meeting.
I'll make your motion.
I will. Before you go, I'm ready. Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
After the question.
Yes.
Yes. And that brings to an end our city council meeting, you know, the official business that we do in the city. And now we open the doors to our good and welfare. And it's an important part of city business because we get a chance to hear from you on items that you find to be important. And of course, we welcome that. Many legislation or legislative pieces have come from the good and welfare. And our first person that we had who we're happy to see is here, this Louis C. Centon. Good to see you. I've known this lady for a long time, it's just good, always good to see when he comes in.
First of all, I didn't want to use my, my three minutes of my good and welfare because I had a question for Mr. Schmied. My daughter lives up, East Fulton, right on the Reverend J. Evans area. Head Start is the next corner. It's a one-way between East Fulton and Pine Street. City vehicles, taxi cab drivers, the police cars, they all come the opposite way, and KMRX, they just rip down the street, go coming towards Park Avenue, and it's only, it's only one way going north. The other thing is, you were talking about no texting and driving, no telephone calls. You need to tell your police department, your city workers, your taxi cab drivers, they can't be on their phones, they're treated just like everybody else. But that's not happening. And it's very dangerous, we've got a lot of kids over there, and now school's open again, Head Start is there, nobody's stopping. I have called the police department numerous times, and I have told them about it, they send it offices there at eleven or twelve o'clock in the afternoon. Gee, the kids were picked up earlier this morning, you know, and they're just ripping through and coming both ways. There's been several almost this summer. Is there anything that you can do about that?
First of all, it's good to see you guys today. I know our police commissioner is here, and I'm quite certain he hears what you're saying, and I'm sure that we will not only step up enforcement, we'll put out a memo to all city employees providing that.
I just wanted to emphasize, most commissioners coming forward, that I witnessed this myself, not with respect to police nor city officers, but I witnessed everyday citizens breaking the law, going beyond the stop sign, and also coming up the wrong way, coming up to G Evans Boulevard. So this is really a serious situation, and I hope that we can address this.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The thing is, Annette Bellbaum has been a city employee with daycare for nineteen years and is still not a union member. I have brought this to the attention of this young, so on several other, at several other terms, I was told it would be handled right at the city. Well, two thousand and seventeen, nineteen years in, and she was working at the city yesterday in the kitchen. Okay, I don't get it. Why isn't she entitled to be a CSC member? What happened? Nineteen years she's been there, she has been devoted to this city and its daycare, for nineteen years, and nobody has done squat about her. And she's not the only one, but she's the one that's there the most. The other thing is, Marty Miles. I am the only person that signed his petition to run for city council in building two twenty-five East of West Park Avenue, and the only one that wasn't subpoenaed to go to Supreme Court to say that I signed his petition. Everybody else in my family was subpoenaed. So can you tell me why I was left up with this? Well, I just want to let you know, this is business as usual in Long Beach. We need a change. One is ready all his life. He would have been a terrific asset to the city, and he was bumped. And I believe he was bumped because it's a former employee of the city hall, he knows where all the rights are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Centon, for coming. We have Mr. Eddie Ver...
Verona?
Eddie Verona? Eddie, I'm sorry for mispronouncing, I couldn't read some letters. Well, thank you.
Hello, my name is Eddie Verona, and I was a beach cleaner this summer for the city. I enjoyed my time as a cleaner, and I thank the city for giving me the opportunity to work. This was my first job, and again, I thank the city for this invaluable experience. Furthermore, during my job for the city, I've seen many hard work the city workers do. These hardworking individuals keep our streets clean, water running, and keep residents happy. Many are unsung heroes, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank them.
Thank you, Eddie. Thank you.
I want to thank you for your hard work, because I'm sure you were part of the team that really made our city beautiful and our city great, and I want to thank you for your hard work, and thank you for coming today to express your thoughts.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for thinking of others.
Yeah, that's very nice, very nice. And our next person is Joe Medio, Mr. Medio. It's been a pleasure of meeting, and it's a pleasure to have you. Welcome.
Thank you, President Taj. Scott McHulley, as you know, I was running for the city council against you, then your league team, the same law firm on the city in Congress, visited a woman's home in the canal and showed up my signature petition, which she signed in my presence on June twenty-second. The date written next to her signature was six slash two-two, a Thursday. They subpoenaed our into Supreme Court to testify against me. She testified that I visited her home on the morning of her lot party and asked her to sign my petition and told her it was okay to sign for her election. I testified that I never went to her house. Everyone knows that lot parties are not on Thursdays. Did your lawyers tell her that lot parties are not on Thursdays? No. Did they ask her the date of her lot party? No. If they had, she would have told her that her lot party was on Saturday, July twenty-second, not Thursday, June twenty-second. Did your lawyers tell her that my signature petition had already been submitted to the board of elections by July thirteenth, the legal deadline, nine days before a lot party? No. Did they show her my picture before dragging her into court to testify against me? No. It was the worst week of my life, with perjury, fraud, and forgery allegations hanging over my head, and your league team had a judge believing it too. I hired a private investigator to do what your league team should have done, including showing her my photo. I thank God this woman came back into court the next week and recanted her testimony against me. She testified that some other man had come to her home and asked her to sign for her and husband on Saturday, July twenty-second, on a different form for some other cause. She testified that she clearly remembered me on the beach during her volleyball league, talking to a group of players Thursday evening, June twenty-second. A person next to us said it was okay to sign her husband as they passed the clipboard while I was sneaking. Unthankful, and Anthony Ricolado from the Herald was there and reported this the next day. Scott McHulley, you're both lawyers and law clerks and work with Nassau County judges. At best, what your league team did was shoddy and unprofessional to mislead that witness. At worst, it was gross negligence and might even be interpreted as intentional. We've all lived in the same town. Do you think an apology might be in order to me, my family, and that woman's family?
Yes.
Can you expect the residents of Long Beach to trust your judgment about I-Start, overdevelopment, the law firms you are, which happen to be this law firm, and to vote for you on election day? Shamed on you.
Thank you. And as I was saying, we welcome everyone, and Mr. Medio, you certainly are welcome to be here with us. Please join us again. Thank you, President Taj. Thank you. With that, we have our next person, Mr. Chris Jones. Please focus, Mr. Jones. Just need you to state your name for the record.
Chris Jones. This is addressed to the audience, not the council, specifically, to the group of individuals who have told me so much and continue to do so. My apologies for not attending last council meeting, and I was genuinely very, very old. And please don't mistake my silence for weakness or lack of knowledge. I assure you, it's not. A woman much larger than me once told me to take the cotton out of my ears and stick it in my mouth, a quote which has helped me tremendously now for twenty years. Anyone who has an internet connection knows what is going on up there, and I'll have my chance to debate that in the near future, but just not here. It's great to stand up here and articulate yourself on this podium, but in November, just remember that if nothing changes, nothing changes.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my goodness, Miss Leah Tozer is here. Welcome, Ms. Tozer, good to see you. Ms. Tozer, we just need you to state your name for the record, and you're welcome.
Hi, Leah Tozer. I'm actually, I have a question. So this is something I brought up at one of the last council meetings, about being a member of the CAC committee in relation to the comprehensive plan. I had said that, you know, are we for it, we're stable back in March, there's a lot of things that are happening, and in the budget that you guys have adopted, you mention the comprehensive plan in almost every single page. So I would like to ask yet again, and I don't want Jackson answering, I want the city council, you guys are the ones who's able to, no one has alerted anybody on the CAC committee at all, not myself and twelve other members. There's more than twelve members, but we talk about this quite often. So when is it going to be put back on the agenda? When are we going to start getting this together? We can't just cross our fingers when like a Harvey comes or an Irma comes, we have to really get this in place. Plus, there's a lot of misinformation that is being told to our residents, which is absolutely outrageous, that people have such false information about what it actually is and what it is designed for. So I ask again, when will it be put on the agenda? When are you going to, if you want to do another half week, which by the way, we've done double the amount with any other municipality in New York State, FYI? When are we going to?
Well, if I can respond, I think that, of course, there were a number of public meetings, a number of us went to them. There were still a number of concerns from a number of different groups, and we've taken the time to go back to those groups and express, in an effort to deal with some of the misinformation that's out there. And obviously, before it's put on the agenda, the committee would be informed, and my understanding also that there needs to be another hearing as well before it would be passed, which would be one of the...
Not a number of people who are...
No, I agree with you, but we had to go back to some of those groups, who, different community groups throughout the community, who wanted another opportunity... the community, who wanted another opportunity to discuss some of the issues that are in, that are in the plan. And honestly, until we get through some of those issues, I think that we're, we're turned out while we do some more outreach.
Well, that's why the C A P committee was formed, and, you know, I understand most of those meetings with the community outreach. So why aren't, but why aren't we being engaged?
Well, because I think some of the, some of the stakeholders from inside of the city have reached out to those groups and engaged in meetings and sat through some of them myself. So it's just, some of it is very specific issues, and if in fact it's in years and we need to go back and really have more community involved than I think of before that type of.
But where is the plan for this? Like when?
Well, we've had meetings with the different groups, so until some of those issues are worked through, we're going to continue to engage and go over the concerns. It impacts the community, so they need to be a part of it.
And I, and I know what you're saying, but when? There has to be a timeframe.
There is a timeframe. But right now, there is not a timeframe. These issues are very important. They impact the community, and it is unfair to be quite candid to put a timeframe on it.
So why not have a public meeting where everybody, including all the people that put two and a half years into it, where is, where, why not have a whole meeting with everybody in there instead of just picking certain groups so that everybody can do it?
Yeah, no, that's, that's well thought, and certainly, well, we don't, we're not in opposition to that. But as far as your question, we don't have a timeframe for when we're going to release that timetable of what we're going to do. Again, you know, we wish we were able to do that quickly, but sometimes these things involve an entire process.
And listen, I totally get it, but if you're adopting a budget that literally references it in almost every single page you adopt it, you can't have no timeframe in when we're going to do it. You can't not have the people who've invested so much time and to say, well, taking, everybody should be involved. So I mean, there's.
I totally respect your viewpoint, but I think it's critical for us to remember what the comprehensive plan is. The purpose of the comprehensive plan is to once again enhance the community and the experience. And so usually, when you, when you draft the comprehensive plan, you draft it with, in partnership with the community. And so I think it's very vigilant in terms of working with various community groups, civic groups, to make sure that when we present this plan to this larger body and to the public hearing, that we've done everything that we could possibly do to have that input. I think that's the spirit of where we are with the plan. Obviously, I'm one of the individuals that tabled it, and so I stand strongly behind that statement that we're all working together as a council and as a city to make sure that everyone's included, because this is a plan that's going to impact the entire city, not small groups of people, and we want to maximize the amount of information that we can get to everyone, because this is going to affect every resident in the city of Long Beach. Secondly, you talked earlier about misinformation, and that's critical, and that's why we're doing this. And we're going to do whatever it takes to make sure people understand the nature of the plan. And then thirdly, I was not aware of the fact that you, as a member of the C A P, that you were not informed about where we are with the plan and with the status. And so we'll work on our end to make sure that the members of your committee are informed.
Well, I did say at that time that we were, so I'm just saying, but the comprehensive plan itself is a vision over twenty years.
Absolutely.
So we have a roadmap to start doing projects for resiliency, which is why we keep losing money and not getting this money for grants that would actually help, and we wouldn't have to bond for this, we would be able to actually do it. So I think it would be very important to get a public engagement, and again, like, why they just stop? Because people are taking it specifically and add context and not what it's for. But again, if you're adopting a budget and you're putting this in on every single page, then there should be something on it. So thank you.
Miss Tozer, thank you. Point very well taken. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Lou Dubon. Welcome, Mr. Dubon. Good to see you. I see he's not with you, and.
She's at home this evening. But I'm here, obviously, talking to myself, and I'm trying to look through that. Speaking, we should go inform that the city would not go ahead with the plan until we do all the bulkheads on the base site. Obviously, my, my big issue. This created a problem for us if we were counting on the city doing the work. It may have been finally able to close out our New York Rising account after that house was finally completed. Our vice chairman, New York Rising, today was told that they could not do anything with the closed application, and therefore, we could not get any additional money for the bulkhead. At the last counterpoint, the city was trying to get the governor, senators, if they sent a committee to help extend the New York Rising program to rebuild the bulkheads. Where does that stand at this point? Can they also push to reopen the closed application because of us just wiping out the city is not going to redo the bulkheads? And also, in reference to that, if the city's doing it, excuse me, I know that you have bids out there to, to, of course, to do that to go to the city program. Are there any bids that you've received yet and any feedback on what happened with the governor or the senators and everyone else?
Good to see you. I would, I'll let the Commissioner of Public Works speak to the bids specifically, but we have, at this point, we have heard from the state that they, they have not made additional funding available. I don't know that we've received their letter, though Newsday received the letter before we did, so it was a little disappointing. But we'll continue to work with them and advocate for them to do what I know that you feel and we feel is the right thing, which is to open up that funding by whatever means makes the sense to them.
I mean, because we worked, we worked out there, and then a few weeks ago, it's like, you're ass off.
Exactly. And I know, particularly for you, there was a duplication of benefit issue with the caseworkers that told you that, you know, that would be a duplication of benefit. So that's, that's something that we cite as a major part of our argument. So as soon as we have an additional update on that, we'll certainly make you aware. And in the meantime, I guess I'll check with the Commissioner of Public Works, as to, I don't, I don't know, the bids probably, just, I'm guessing, the bids have not come back yet as.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, what do I do? Do I take out additional money to do my bulkhead? Or is it going to pay for me to actually pay that out in twenty years to the city? You know, kind of got to buy my, my bulkhead insurance, because shop has been for the last five years, you know?
I'm sure the Commissioner of Public Works gave you some guidance, maybe not specifically on what exactly you should do, but at least when the bids are going to come back and how to.
Okay, good, thank you. I got to tell you, when I first started, I got charging, popping, happening, I was driving, my pops up and sweat. You know, it's like, it's like reliving the whole thing again, so it's.
Yes, yes.
Funny.
Thank you, Mr. Dubon. Thank you for being, good questions. Our next person is Allison Blanchett. Thank you for staying with us, Blanchett.
What is it? Boothsy left. It was nice seeing her. I've been here a long time. She's great. I did want to echo what she was saying about J. J. Evans. It's not just Head Start that's there, but we also have a church, and we have a playground, and I know someone who is a longtime organizer and, or community organizer that I've often tried to get by school groups for the children to go there, and it's completely impossible because it's so dangerous. But so what I wanted to talk about is, I actually wanted to thank Commissioner Tackey. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Tackey and Lieutenant Ryan, I wanted to thank them for, and recognize them to the council with their partnership and a lovely petal. So the Long Beach Police Department is one of my partners for the Sacred St. Soul School Steering Committee, as is the London College, the New York Coalition for Transportation Safety, Safe Kids, Triple A Legislative Board, and, oh, the Long Beach School District, of course. So we had our lovely petal. This was our second one. We had over fifty children, which is great. This included a three-year-old on training wheels, and this was a five-mile. There's no excuse, right? One off two five miles, basically. We had over a hundred people roll through Henneby Plaza. They registered their bicycles, and I'm sure a lot of them were bicycles. We registered, I have to check if they're afterwards, and we did a lot of, just talking about general bicycle and pedestrian safety. So this is the only event in the city of Long Beach, the one and only event that teaches bicycle and pedestrian safety for a city, and Jack, I spoke to you about this during the event, for a city that is ahead of national average when it comes to cyclists and commuters, and for a city that brought in Patricia Ford's bicycle survey. We had an epic amount of responses on that bicycle survey. You'd think we'd have a little more education going on, because clearly, we have people who would absorb it, and I'm sure you all hear, whether it's through your emails in person or on the all-powerful internet, people complaining about, you know, bicycles do this, bicycles do that, pedestrians, blah, blah, blah. We need to have a little more city buy-in to our education. It's not just for cyclists or pedestrians, but it's for drivers as well, and often, we are all of them. And this, I just wanted to touch on Tozer's comment about the comprehensive plan. It absolutely cannot pass right now because the transportation component of it is horrendous. And then finally, I want to say thank you. I had asked Jack if he would be able to write a letter in support of lowering the speed limit on Lido Boulevard. I know this is outside your jurisdiction, but I asked if the city could do that, and he said that he did. I don't know if it was you or the council, but whoever did that, I wanted to say a very, very sincere thank you for writing that letter. We need to have a steady, consistent, no higher than thirty miles per hour the entire line barrier on them. So thank you for supporting that.
Allison, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Again, thank you for staying with us this late, and next week, and always happy to hear from Mr. Jay Gussler. Jay, you're in the past, it's good to see you, and hopeful as well. And Oscar Vendo, Oscar Vendo's here. Good to see you. Yes, we just need you to state your name for the record, but I tell you, welcome.
Sure thing. Good evening, John Vendo. Hopefully, I think I'm last, so maybe we'll be ending on a high note.
Former person, I do.
I know, I was lucky. I just wanted to say, this weekend, we finished our, I don't know if this was fifth or sixth year of Movies on the Beach. So I just wanted to say thank you to the city for their cooperation. Once again, we provided free entertainment to thousands of people. It's gotten so much of a reputation that people come in from out of town for it, families have parties. So it was another very successful year, and we look forward to doing it again next year.
Thank you, Mr. Vendo. Always good to hear from you. And, you know, coming down the Pike is our jazz festival, and we have Miss Allison here. We're looking forward to that. I don't even know if I can say anything, but I just wanted to say that I look forward to that time of year. Love the jazz that's brought in with the jazz festival. And of course, Mr. Phil Schlitz. Loved it. I haven't seen you in such a long time. I've been away, and it's good to see you. I see you have a sun tan.
Well, thank you for saying the best for last. I'll stick to my three minutes if possible. I just want to let people know that in the record, they had an article on one of my favorite subjects. Okay? Is that what it is? Defibrillate. And I just want to take a minute to let people know that they can come to city council meetings in a state of friendliness, trying to get things done, and also tonight, I heard a lot of thank you for people for getting things done. And that's the democratic way, and I'm, anybody who knows I'm a Democrat, and we have a 5-0 board, and this town does have issues that need to be addressed, and I'm sure that they will be. Now, getting back to the defibrillate issue, I lobbied and spoke on that because there was a person in Huntington, illegal seafood who died because there wasn't one, and then eventually word got out, and I started to speak of it. Might not be as clear as I wanted to be, but my heart is stuck here there. And I just want to take a minute to, to thank Councilman Arango for his support of me during my trials and tribulations, because government isn't as simple as it looks just as Trump. Okay? Now, the defibrillates are in the Department. I thank them, and also, we are getting the defibrillate issue that we eye, but there are other issues that I might feel that I have to speak upon, and I just want to thank the city council, the city manager, and the city attorney, and our clerk for doing an outstanding job. I really didn't like what I heard before, and that was a Democrat speaking. And, you know, when you, if you lose a race, you always get behind the party and leave what you felt was due you wasn't properly handled. Well, that's that person's opinion. I happen to know Councilman Mandel and Councilman Darnes, and I know that they care about this community, and that's the type of people we have to have. Wayos sometimes seem important, but I think, hey, 5-0. I've been in this city for five years, and I've seen it grow. There have been issues, but overall, you really have to think about it. Okay, your point of view on a specific subject might not have been satisfying, but think of it. That sound is familiar, so that's my cue. Thanks for listening, and God bless you all, and let God rest Paul and B. because they have a tough life.
Yes, yes, I'm concerned too, concerned. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, you're always a gentleman. And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, for staying with us, and to get home safely, and thank you for coming on.